Fourth twenty twenty one regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at six oh three P M. I'm going to ask interim city attorney Robert Kim to do the invocation. And we will be led in the pledge of the lead, a pledge of allegiance by interim city manager Vaughn Norris.
Please have everyone stand. Please face a flag. Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Hey, um, let us bow our heads. Let us pray silently together, each one of us according to our individual beliefs. Let us offer thanks for this city council meeting and the blessings of good decision making and lively debate. Let us be a source of hope for those in our community in need and contentment for those who are seeking a better life in our city. Let us give gratitude for our opportunity to serve the Hawthorne community. That the feelings of love, kindness, and well-directed yet strong and gentle spirit always be reflected in our actions. Amen.
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 Mister clerk, uh, may we have the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, uh, council member Montero.
Present.
Council member Patterson.
Here.
Council member Reyes English.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Here.
And Mayor Vargas. So all are present except for Mayor Vargas.
All right, so, um, item number three is a presentation on National Night Out. And, um, I'm going to ask Eric to start the, um, Eric Chavez to start the video. We will begin the video.
Local sponsors came together to put on a celebration for National Night Out. Reporter Kayla Moller has the details.
A nationally recognized night out is a great way to bring people together. Hosted primarily by the Hawthorne Police Department, they wanted to create a safer city by collaborating with their community.
This is really what we're about. We're, we're, we're about community service. Uh, we want to be here for the people and making those kind of intimate connections, uh, with their community members. So it's a really good time for us personally and, and as a department as a whole.
It got pretty rough there for a while, so it's nice to see people out, um, being able to interact with them and, um, you know, just basically try and get back to some sense of normalcy.
The police department had help from several community agencies to put on this three hour event.
Tonight, we have our, all of our homeowners associations. We have, uh, different, uh, businesses from the city. And everyone out here is here to have a good time and to celebrate the good relationship we have in Hawthorne with our police department.
We've got food, games, we even have the mayor as DJ, but my favorite part is the horses.
The kids were having a great time with the horses and yard games while the adults enjoyed poker and blackjack by the DJ booth.
It's nice for them to just get out and like be with other people and see other kids and play with other kids.
And the Del Ray Community Jazz Band came out to perform live music for the residents.
Something you call love but confess.
It's just good to be out and about, out of our, out of our homes for at least one night. And, uh, looking forward to chatting among the residents here.
And Mayor Alex Vargas kept it lively on the dance floor.
Playing music and serving others is a passion of mine, so DJing for the residents and for the community. And in my past is making sure people dance and have a good time, and I want to make sure the residents have a good time.
National Night Out's ultimate goal was to build community relationships.
A safer Hawthorne is just being in collaboration with your community. But as a community, we're able to do that because of the great relationships that we have with our police chief and our police officers.
I just love knowing that, um, I can just let my kids play outside and they'll be safe because of the community that's around us and knowing that the police department or the fire department are always around and just here for us.
Hawthorne's National Night Out was also in collaboration with Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office.
So it's great to come out and meet people and get important resources that you need, that are available to you and your very own neighborhood.
California State Senator Steven Bradford also stopped by.
Great turnout, great, um, community support, and I commend the city of Hawthorne for their leadership and their vision of, uh, celebrating National Night Out.
National Night Out is an annual event held on the first Tuesday of every August. For H C T V, I'm Kayla Moller.
For upcoming Hawthorne events, you can find the city calendar at W W W dot city of Hawthorne dot org.
Our city was not the only one to celebrate National Night Out. National Night Out is a national night of celebration for communities all over the country to show their cooperation with their police departments and their determination to take back their communities from any criminal influences. I'm going to ask, um, interim city manager Vaughn Norris, um, Hawthorne Police Lieutenant Amy Yoshida, uh, our, members of our committee to say a few words about National Night Out and about our, our event.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Um, it was a great event. It was lovely to see the participation from residents in Hawthorne and other local, uh, residents that, uh, as a city that we stood together and we stay together, that we support our police department and we support our, our neighborhood, um, associations. Uh, want to say special thanks to the committee members that helped us plan this great event. Uh, we met numerous dates in, in wonder if we were going to be able to have this great event as we did in, uh, two thousand. And we were able to have the event and it was great, great participation from all the departments, great participation from all the service clubs and the residents. And I can't wait till next year. So thank you again for those who did participate.
Lieutenant Amy Yoshida.
Yes, I just want to say, first of all, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Uh, National Night Out basically promotes police community relationships. It's building neighborhood co- camaraderie and just to make our neighborhood safer. And I just felt like is it extremely an successful event. Um, it was great to see such a great turnout between, I think, anywhere from three to five hundred people. It was great to see people for the first time in a long time during this pandemic. And it was wonderful being able to meet people in person for the first time instead of on a computer screen. So it was just exciting and, and I think everybody enjoyed being there. One of the things that stood out to me as a young father with two young children approached me as we were setting up. And he was asking me what was going on, so I explained to him what National Night Out was about. And so we spoke for a while and I told him we were warming the grill up for the hot dogs, so to come back and join us. And they did join us and, and, uh, enjoyed the festivities. And I saw the kids playing all the games and they were having a blast. Um, so to me, that's what National Night Out is all about. It was forming those partnerships and building the camaraderie and just having a great time together. Um, I basically want to take the time to thank the community for all of their support. And I especially want to congratulate Mayor Pro Tem. Um, our city manager, our Parks and Rec Department, um, as well as ABBA. Um, you organized an outstanding event, so thank you.
And, and thank you for your participation and all the assistance you gave us. So there are a lot of people to thank for helping us put on this event. Again, I want to thank the Hawthorne Police Department and its representative Lieutenant Amy Yoshida. Uh, our committee team leader ABBA Ingisa, who was not able to come tonight from Parkside Village. And the Parkside Village Homeowners Association, the Holly Park Neighborhood Association, Ramona Neighborhood Association, Parkside Village Homeowners, Homeowners Association, the Del Ray Community Jazz Band, which kept us dancing all night. It was really, they were really, uh, really very, 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 um, excited, a very exciting band, really great band. Elizabeth Mosley for leading the community dancing, the Kiwanis Club. Um, and I want to thank the sponsors for their contributions. Republic Services, Sky One Federal Credit Union, council member Alex Montero, and Commissioners Hermenia Balboa and Solo Azuma. And last but not least, I want to thank our favorite DJ, our Mayor Alex Vargas, and I'm going to turn the program over to him. Good evening, Mayor.
Uh, good evening to everyone. Um, I'm in a hotel lobby. Um, I'm doing this remotely, so if there's anything in the background, uh, be careful and mute myself as needed, just to prevent you guys from hearing all this other stuff. Congratulations to all the people who helped organize the National Night Out. It was such a great event that, I mean, I would like to do it again, uh, very soon, maybe even before the end of the summer. If possible, and if everybody's able to, uh, help with that, I, I'll, I certainly would be able to help as well. Okay, so thank you. Um, item number four is a presentation uh, on the M A M A D Institute. Council member Reyes English, you have the floor now, man. Go ahead. Council member English.
But you're muted, council member.
I didn't realize that you were going out of your, uh, comments regarding National Night Out. We, I didn't have a chance to comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Night out.
Go, go ahead and do it right now, man.
Okay, we're, let me just go ahead and, uh, commend all the committee and, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine for your efforts and everyone that participated. National Night Out, Night Out, the police officers and all the folks that participated, uh, with regards to making hot dogs and, and the pizza and everything else out there. So thank you greatly to everyone who, um, helped in coordinating and organizing National Night, Night Out. Um, I want to speak on tonight, uh, with regards to, um, AMAD Institute. It's, uh, Army Minorities Against Addiction and Disease. Uh, where the AMAD Policy Alliance and the Coalition was birthed. Um, I missed out on an opportunity to, uh, participate in a Zoom that they had. And so I asked them this evening to please come and give us, uh, real quick, um, overview of their program. And so I have Mister Thompson here, if you will, Mister Thompson, thank you for making it out and go ahead, sir.
Thank you, thank you for having me, uh, Councilwoman Reyes English, appreciate you for reaching out.
Go ahead.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council members. Thank you for allowing me to present. It's an honor and a privilege to be here before you. My name is Tyrone Thompson and I am the project coordinator for the Hawthorne Coalition. Our vision is to have a smoke-free Hawthorne by reducing exposure to secondhand smoke in outdoor areas. I am a resident of Hawthorne, but tonight, I'm, I'm the, I'm acting as a facilitator of Hawthorne Coalition. Uh, I work for amazing nonprofit, the Ahmad Institute. Ahmad stands for Army Minorities Against Addiction and Diseases. Uh, Ahmad facilitates and facilitates personalized individual a- access to programs and services that fosters safe and safe and supportive, healthy environments for people to live, learn, and develop their fullest potential. In two thousand and nineteen, Ahmad partnered up with the L A County Department of Public Health Tobacco Control and Prevention Program. With the objective to inform and educate Hawthorne residents on the effects of secondhand smoke. Provide education about ways to protect non-smokers with safe and healthier environment in the city of Hawthorne. Few definitions of secondhand smoking aerosol. Secondhand smoke? Secondhand smoke is, is a lit, is lit in of tobacco, marijuana, and burning product and smoke that has been exhaled by the person smoking. Secondhand smoke aerosol is a vapor, inhale, and exhale electronic smoking devices which are harmful due to chemical and heavy metals such as nicotine, benzene, tin, lead, and nickel. Through our research, we have, we discovered the following. There have been over a hundred and seventy studies that have been shown secondhand smoke policies do not have a negative impact on businesses. Thirty-three cities in L A County have passed smoke-free outdoor dining policies. L A County experienced a loss of four point four billion dollars a year due to tobacco-related health care. Secondhand smoke is a third-leading cause of critical death due to the hundred, one forty-nine thousand estimated deaths a year in the U S for non-smokers who have been exposed to secondhand smoke. In L A County, the estimate is eight thousand two hundred and seventy. After the partnership, uh, with the Tobacco Control Prevention Program, Ahmad took the streets apart then. From April two, twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty, they conducted an out, outdoor area public survey, uh, opinion survey, uh, reaching seven hundred and twenty-three Hawthorne residents. Including with eighty-two percent reported that being exposed to secondhand smoke in outdoor areas. Eighty-six percent consider secondhand smoke exposure in outdoor areas harmful to their health. Seventy-four percent support a total ban of smoking in outdoor dining patios. And seventy-six percent support a total ban of smoking around doorways and windows. Here's a twenty, uh, here in twenty L A County cities are comprehensive, that have comprehension ordinances. Uh, it just shows like the neighborhood cities that are, are surround us and further out that, uh, have comprehensive survey, uh, comprehensive ordinance. And this is a graph, this is show, uh, the comparisons from those, uh, ordinances in those cities compared to Hawthorne. Hawthorne does not have a comprehensive ordinance, but I just put that on there so we can see the comparison. In order to be comprehensive, you have to have five out of the four, out of the nine that cover outdoor dining, entryway, public events, recreation area, service area, sidewalks, and work sites. Benefits of, benefits of smoke-free outdoor area policies protects non-smokers from exposure to secondhand smoke, reduces the risk for heart disease, lung cancer among non-smokers. And with the norm of smoking changing, uh, social acceptance will change, lower opportunities for, uh, to smoke and, and be visible of smokers, which will lower the rate among youth and young adults smoking. It will reduce the tobacco litter opportunities and is no harm or negative impact to our local community economy. Policy provisions. Hawthorne can become a, a comprehensive, strong city with a policy provision if they have outdoor dining areas that cover outdoor dining areas, doorways, and outdoor windows of private and owned buildings, sidewalks, outdoor public events such as farm market, fairs, concerts, smoking in outdoor service areas. Definitions that include with language include tobacco smoke, electronic smoking devices, vapor. Definition smoking that means, means inhaling, exhaling, or carrying any lighted, heated, or ignited cigar, cigarette, pipe, buka, electronic device around with them. Enforcement. Enforcement should be fair, equal across the board without targeting any specific minority group. It can be implemented within thirty days of pass policy adoption. Smoking should be prohibited and it should be an infraction. We believe community service would be the, the right outlook for it and should be subject to fi- to hundred dollar fines. Violators should be considered a public nuisance. Creation of educational campaign and signage should be placed all around the city. And with the, and with, uh, mainly self-enforcing, I think people, people, our community will self-enforce that. If we, if we put the word out there on the streets and let them know secondhand smoke is killing us, it's not healthy and all, all the side effects of secondhand smoke, and people will stop smoking, people will let other people know. Stop smoking around me, my family, my kids. I mean, it's life-saving. That will conclude my presentation. I want to thank you, uh, Reyes English for inviting me, letting me present to you guys. Uh, we still have a, uh, Let Me Breathe Town Hall series on, uh, September twenty-fifth, it's tomorrow, and August eighth. Sorry, August eighth is next month and September twenty-fifth is today, right? No, August, I'm, sorry. August twenty-fifth is tomorrow for our first day of our city council series. September eighth is our second day that we're going to invite the city council members to come and be a part of that. We're going to have a, a panel and we'll discuss how we can fix secondhand smoke in Hawthorne. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mister Thompson. You did a great, we did, you did a great job. Appreciate, uh, the, the, the opportunity and moreover, the efforts of, uh, AMAD Institute and all that you're doing to bring awareness to the community of Hawthorne. Uh, I do see there's many cities that, uh, have already adopted some of your policies. I look forward to forwarding this on to our city attorney and having them review that so that we could see how maybe we could support also. Okay, again, thank you for your time and appreciate you, uh, making yourself available. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, doesn't look like there are any, any additional comments, so we'll move on to the next thing. Thank you, guys. Uh, Mister Clerk, please read the guidelines for communications, please.
Yes, Mister Mayor, pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five four point three, all remarks shall be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body should have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and/or recommendation.
How many people do we have?
Mister Mayor, we received, uh, no emails regarding public comments, um, and items on tonight's agenda. We have two speakers tonight for oral communications.
Go ahead and, uh, um, you know.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move forward.
One by one, you go ahead.
Okay. Diana is going to be calling the first person.
Okay, and Andres, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi. Hi, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Andres Arro, and I am a resident, um, I have the thirty-seven thirty-one twenty-sixth street, here in O'Keeffe. And I'm calling, uh, um, I want to address you guys because I wanted to ask if you could somehow petition to get our parking, our street parking by permit. Oh, and I understand that parking is an issue here in Hawthorne and I don't, I have, I've never had any issues with people parking. The issues that have, um, come up with, um, people who park here are leaving their trash. So we're, my neighbors and I are cleaning up trash daily. Uh, people are out there, um, probably having sex because we've had to pick up condom. Um, they're out there smoking weed and, um, on Tuesday I decided to, last Tuesday I decided to make the, to take the initiative because there was a guy teaching on his truck. Um, and he wasn't, wasn't, it didn't seem like someone that was homeless. Um, and not only that, but he was dumping out cans of beer on the street and left like a bag of McDonald's. And, um, I obviously can't come front of him because he's going to know where I live and, you know, this is where my family lives. Um, I, I was taking my little girl to school at the time and when this was happening, so, um, it's becoming an issue on our street. Um, it's been an issue for two years. And our neighbors, my neighbors and myself, we're tired of picking up trash after these people. And so, um, I want, I, I want to ask the petition so that we can get parking by permit on our block. Because I know this, that the other blocks closer to Rose Town have it as well. And, um, I've talked to some of the residents there and they were having the same issue as they petitioned it, um, for the same reason. And, um, yeah, so we, uh, we also like, um, get people at night, just park there and just kind of hang out and we've had to come out and kind of ask them to not smoke weed or like be trash. So, um, I don't know if there's anything else that I could do. Um, but my neighbor, I spoke to some of my neighbors and they're on board and so we wanted to start that petition.
Sir, so I'm going to go and ask our police chief to contact, um, city manager Vaughn Norris. Can you put, uh, the, connect with this gentleman and connect him with the chief for enforcement, please? Mister City Manager?
Yes, noted.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, now we have Mister Ruben Sanchez. Mister Sanchez, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Ruben Sanchez with North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm calling to thank, um, Chief Hichy for, for helping us with the encampment on one oh five freeway next to Oxford. Uh, a lot of residents, as you know, have been complaining about the situation. You know, their livelihood, the quality of life have been destroyed for many, for many months now, years. And, uh, I'm glad that they're, they're, they're helping them. Um, also wanted to, uh, wanted to thank, uh, Public Works for going out there and cleaning the place up. These guys go out there, they risk their, their health all the time and, uh, they, they should be honored for that as well. Um, but I also wanted to talk about, um, uh, we should be talking about some issues right now that are very important, especially in regards of bringing in more code enforcement. Because it looks like we have very little code enforcement and we have a lot of people and a lot of businesses. Uh, they're overworked, uh, uh, because these, uh, the three, um, uh, departments I just mentioned right now, they all work together, you know, and they work always out in regards with, uh, with the homeless situation. And, and, you know, the, uh, and plus they have to do their, their usual work. It's hard. These are the things that should be on the agenda. These things that should be talked about. But right now we're talking, you know, well, two weeks ago, we're talking about banning fireworks stands, you know. Really, you, you know, I understand that people don't like fireworks, the loud noises and so on. But those are not the legal fireworks that are exploding like that. And, um, you know, but, uh, to be honest, I think there's, there's people that are, that are misleading our council members. Uh, they're pretending to be like hundreds of people who don't, who want to ban fireworks and so on. And it's really not. It's really like two or three, uh, individuals who have multiple accounts on Nextdoor, have multiple accounts on social media. And all they do is just harass people on social media. So, you know, um, I, I feel that, you know, the council members have been misguided, you know, have been misinformed. And, and if they really want to talk to the community, really want to talk to residents, hey, give us a call, we'll talk them. As you know, with Chief Hichy, uh, we, we send some residents that way in regards of this whole encampment situation. So, so, yeah, and we need to start focusing on the real issues that I have. Well, there's a lot of big issues and like I said, code enforcement, we need more personnel. We need more people out there to be working and, you know, and that's exactly what they're doing right now. And going back to the, to the fireworks stand, I know they're going to be talking about fireworks shows and stuff and things. But in, in reality, if that's going to be something that they're going to talk about to, to replace the fireworks, uh, the fireworks stands that the, our organization be using, uh, I don't think that's a good idea. They should put this, uh, the fireworks stand is, uh, issue should be put on the ballot. And, uh, if anything, you know, the people who are misguided, the council members with this false information, um, they're pretty much making all you guys look like if you guys want to.
Sorry, sir, you have fifteen seconds.
Okay, they're making everyone look like they want to defund our community. And you can't, you know, and like I said, they're not doing you guys a favor by, by bringing these things and putting on the item. They're making you guys look like you're defunding our communities and that's not, that's not a good look, so. Uh, like I said, God bless, take care, and, uh, talk to you guys later.
Thank you. You have a good night.
You too.
Is there anyone else?
No, that is all. That's the end of public comments.
All right, um, since there's no one else wishing to speak, I declare oral communications a closed order. So, um, just in, just in case we need to, uh, close the meeting, I don't have my gavel. I'm going to use this, uh, this block that I have here that I'm going to hit on the ground, hit a table in case I need to, uh, close the meeting or adj- or recess the meeting if, when we have to go to city council or any other thing that I need. I'll be hitting this on the ground like that. Thank you. At this time, there's a need to take close session, item thirty three, prior to the city consent counter. Is that still the case in Herm City Attorney?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna ask to pull both number thirty three and thirty four out of order and do a close session. We could do a joint close session for both items, number thirty three and thirty four at this time.
Okay, so it'll be more expedient if we do that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so are there any comments on that, on item specifically on item number thirty three and item number thirty four?
No, we did not receive any comments for either item.
So what we'll, what I'll do now is I will recess the city council meeting to conduct a close session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I read the, the items?
Absolutely. Please read this into record.
Thank you. Uh, number thirty three is a close session conference with labor negotiator pursuant to subdivision A of section five four nine five seven point six of the California Government Code. Name of the labor negotiators are interim city manager Von Norris and interim human resources director Irma Yusefi. This regarding Hawthorne Police Management and Supervisory Group, HP MSG, and also Hawthorne Police Officer Association, HPOA. Uh, the second item is number, I didn't, agenda item number thirty four. This is a close session conference with labor negotiator subdivision A of the section five four nine five seven point six of the California Government Code. Name of the labor negotiators will be interim city manager Von Norris and interim human resources director Irma Yusef regarding Hawthorne Executive Group and Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, part-time, HMEA, part-time. However, on item number thirty four, uh, interim city manager Von Norris will not take part. He will go into close session and will remain silent and observe due to possible, um, conflict issues.
Okay, uh, Mr. City Attorney, uh, please just once that comes up, okay? So we're in compliance with the, so if there's no other comments, uh, we will, I will recess the conference, the, of we. I will recess the city council meeting for the conference pursuant to the agenda at six thirty two. We are in recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room.
At 6:56 PM, we have met in in close session for a conference pursuant to to the agenda listed as item thirty-three and item thirty-four. Interim City Kim, can you read out what was concluded, please?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council met in closed session with respect to agenda item number three thirty-three, conference with labor negotiators for both HPOA Hawthorne Police Officer Association and HPMSG Hawthorne Police Management and Supervisory Group. City Council have accepted the MOUs and have voted unanimously to agree to the MOU terms for both HPMSG and HPOA.
Okay, so is that it? Mr. City Attorney?
One more item with respect to closed session on agenda item number thirty-four, conference with labor negotiators. City Council met in close session with respect to Hawthorne Executive Group, HEG, the labor negotiators have been instructed. With respect to HMEA part-time, City Council voted five to zero to to separate the MOUs from the HMEA MOU.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Good for that. Interim City Attorney Kim. Mr. Clerk, may we have the clerk's consent calendar, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Mayor, there are eight items on the consent calendar, items seven to nine and items twelve to sixteen for your consideration and approval. Item seven, approval of City Council minutes for the regular meeting of August tenth, twenty twenty-one. Item eight, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item nine, City Treasurers request approval of the warrants. Item twelve, resolution number eight two nine five, resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing certain designated City of Hawthorne officers to order the deposit or withdrawal of money from the local agency investment fund. Item thirteen, resolution number eight two nine six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, accepting Federal Aviation Administration Airport Rescue Grant, AIP three dash zero six dash zero one zero one dash zero two two dash twenty twenty-one in an amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand under the American Rescue Plan Act and authorizing and ratifying the Director of Public Works' execution of grant documents. Item fourteen, resolution number eight two nine seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, appointing voting delegate and two alternatives to the League of California Cities Annual Conference, September twenty-second through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one in Sacramento, California. Item fifteen, resolution number eight two nine eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, providing for the terms and conditions of employment of those employees represented by the Hawthorne Police Management Supervisor Group according to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and authorizing the interim city manager to execute HPMSG memorandum of understanding. Item sixteen, resolution number eight two nine nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, providing for the terms and conditions of employment of those employees represented by the Hawthorne Police Officers Association according to the provisions of the Hawthorne Municipal Code and authorizing the interim city manager to execute HPOA memorandum of understanding. Mr. Mayor may have a motion to approve items seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen.
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask to pull item number fourteen because we will need some
Yeah, that's a good idea.
coordination for that one.
Coordination?
Mayor Pro Tem, can you, can you read the motion with that included, please?
Yes, I move to approve all items except for item fourteen.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
So on item fourteen, since it's a resolution to appoint a delegate and two alternates, essentially, we need to decide who those people will be at this meeting, correct, interim city attorney?
Yes, the reason why I I asked to pull this item is this, there's gonna be one delegate. This is a annual conference of the California League of Cities in Sacramento, September twenty-second through twenty-four. And at the conference, on the last day, there will be an annual business meeting where we need to pass a pass a resolution to select the delegate and two alternates. Now, I understand that in the past, there's been committees and people selected to be delegates and alternates, and I reviewed the 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 people chosen for that, and we do not have a committee or chosen delegates for this particular purpose. So basically, we need to select the delegate and two alternates by vote, but I I'm not sure whether everyone is interested in becoming a delegate and alternate, so I I suggest that preliminarily, we decide who is not interested in becoming a delegate or alternate for this annual conference.
Mayor, turn around here.
Well, I'll say something real quick and then I'll pass it on to you. Is that okay? Okay, just interim city attorney. So that if you remember, in the committees that we have, we have, we've already appointed a delegate and an alternate for the LA City selection committee. But the difference between the Sacramento one and this one is that this is the local Los Angeles division, and whoever was the delegate has already assumed that they decided to do so because they would be able to go to the local meetings. Now, this is a statewide one, which is with the League of California Cities. And at some point, I decided to head up there, and I think it wasn't either, it was approved, I guess, by the city council. It was just mentioned, it wasn't even through resolution, and at times Mayor Pro Tem has gone. I don't know if Councilmember English has gone, but maybe you have. Did you ever represent us or not yet?
Yeah, well, this this is something that is, we've, we were, we were selected already. We made a committee selection, if you remember, I think it was in February when we first came on as new council, and we were all assigned committees, and everybody got the schedule because Rebecca sent it to us. And I do remember that the League of California Cities, I was the delegate, and Patterson is the alternate. And if there, if you look at the selection, the committee selection, everybody was appointed different committees and selections, but that's normally the rule of thumb, and this is something we've done in the past. Those that get assigned during our first council meeting in January have those appointments and those are selected, and then any conferences that take place that require the delegate and its alternate would be the ones that go.
A councilmember English, no, I agree, that's for the local LA City ones. I would like to, but there's, this is the Sacramento selection committees. And so I would defer to whoever those, whoever the local LA City first representative is and their alternate to be given first choice to go up to the Sacramento the meeting to vote. I mean, you, you guys are the guys, you and
Right.
Councilmember Patterson.
This is the, this is This is the annual conference that takes place in Sacramento. It's just the conference that takes place in Sacramento. It doesn't, it doesn't change the committees that were assigned to us, delegate and alternate. It just happens, it just happens to be in Sacramento, that's all.
I would defer to you to be represented, and if for some reason you guys, either of you guys can't get on a trip up there, you could just let us know. That's it, that's really it.
Like I said, I I don't think everyone is interested in being the delegate and alternate, so if you want to be the delegator or alternate, I think we should just be out there so that we could just approve it, vote to approve it, you know, so.
I'm the delegate.
Okay.
And I'm the alternate.
Yeah, so you guys got that.
And we could have one more alternate, there could be one delegate and two alternates, so everyone's agreeable, then if we have a volunteer for the third alternate, and we don't have to have a third, a second alternate, so.
Would anybody like to volunteer for that?
Just, just put me as a, as a third alternative, but I I concur that Ms. English and David Patterson should should be the the priority.
Okay, so this resolution will be to, resolution number eighty-two ninety-seven will be to select Ms. Reyes, Councilwoman Reyes English to be the delegate, Councilmember Patterson to be the alternate, and also Councilmember Montero to be the alternate.
Okay, I make, I make a motion for that.
Second.
Roll call vote on that item, please.
All right, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor and city council voting yes, that concludes the clerk's consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, for sure, absolutely. Let's check a look right here. Item seventeen is public hearings, we don't have any today. And item eighteen are ordinances, we don't have any of those today, so we are separating our city council meeting into sections, and we're trying not to mix up the different types of things we need to discuss and vote on, so we're discreetly packaging everything throughout the meeting. But now we move on to the general matter sections, things that are of general concern to the city, which we do have to vote on as well. And so, Mr. Norris, and I think with reference to the interim city attorney, we're going to discuss the selection of the cannabis consultant out of the three finalists, and you have some instructions. So, Mr. Interim City Manager, the agenda reflects that you have items twenty-two to twenty-six on the city manager's consent calendar. I understand you're going to give us instructions on how to place our votes, but we're going to allow, obviously, for a discussion on that item, which is of great concern to the, great importance to the community. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, council. What staff has done is inserted a vanilla envelope with the three candidates for selection. What I would like council to do is circle the one consultant you would like to move forward with. Circle only one, please initial the document, place it back in your vanilla, vanilla envelope. I will come to your office to pick up those items, we'll calculate and announce who the consultant city council has approved. For those not in attendance, if you can please email me to, you know, or my city emails stating your one selection, and I will add that to the record. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, Vaughn, you said that there is an envelope, where is, where was it placed?
Either on your desk or in the black folder. It has your name with labeled in the middle of the folder.
Okay.
I can come assist if needed.
I, yes, I will need some assistance, I am not able to sign that.
Is there any discussion on this before we vote? Is there any discussion at all? Okay. So just go ahead and fill out your things. Since I don't have a vanilla envelope and I'm outside of the city hall, I'm going to email my choice to our city manager. So it'll be on the record as an email. Just please let me know. Just please let me know if you've got it.
Yep.
No, well, uh let me, let me, let me email him right now.
Mister Mayor, I have the votes in my hand, I would need time to calculate.
You have mine also as well, did you get mine?
Check. No, I have not received your vote.
Take a look now.
Yes, I have received your vote. Would you like me to calculate and announce um?
You have five votes, right? You need to calculate that?
Yes, I do.
I don't know what you mean by that, dude, I'm sorry, I don't mean. Oh, sorry, guys, that just left it open.
Hey, I'm ready to announce the the votes per your request.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we have two votes for cannabis public policy and three votes for EJMA.
Okay.
Awesome, um quick question, uh Mister City Manager. Uh I'm not sure kind of what the next steps are, but I would love to suggest that we maybe create a ad hoc committee that the consultants can work with or report to as they're kind of moving along through the process. Um you know, comprised of, say, yourself, someone from the police department, a council member or two, I would like to volunteer to to uh to be on that committee as well, and wherever else you think is kind of appropriate to help to uh communicate the needs of all all areas of the city to the consultant. Okay, received, I'll work with our city attorney to uh observe and um feel that directive from you, thank you.
Uh I'm going to state my very strong objection to the choice uh for the record. Um EJMA or EJMA does not have nearly the uh experience of the other two, Cannabis Public Policy Consulting and SCI. Now, I wanted to make sure that everyone understands, I was not in favor of having um having retail cannabis in the city at all, but I did want to make a choice to select the most qualified consultant, and I think this council has not done that. I am very disappointed, not because of the choice, but because the council be- because of the choice, but because of the the obvious lack of um thought that went into choosing the 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 consultant for this project. This is very important for the city, and I think the choices were made based on something other than qualifications, clearly. So that's all I have to say.
All right, and not to extend this to long back and forth discussion, but I I really believe that everybody who was in the final three well, were all qualified. Uh I think we started off with a lot of people, filtered them down. Uh I think everybody that was in the top five were all adequately qualified. So um I definitely disagree with that statement, I think uh whoever would have been chosen would have been uh qualified to to do the work. I think everybody um scored uh adequately. Uh they were in the top five, so whoever was chosen as top one, I think was is more than competent.
Yeah, um I just make a comment on it. I think I I I kind of, I do agree, all of the three can- candidates were are well qualified. I just uh felt that yeah, the choice that I made was for a group that was uh deeper in resources. So if ever any of these applicants choose to sue us, uh I think that the group that I chose would have had a deeper uh group of people to count on with the uh additional expertise to be able to protect us and get us out of a bind. Um but that's it, I I I really, I really honestly think that any of these groups would have done wrong. I mean, we had the vote, so that's the way the vote came up in my eyes. Uh well, that's the way the vote came out, so that's it, that's really it.
To the chair.
We'll work with the the with the chosen group, right? Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh yes, Mayor, I I I uh I agree with you, however, um the portion that I don't want to speak ill will to is uh lawsuits. I think um you know, we need to get away from that language, just because we haven't even started this program. And we're um being educated and we're being um careful, you know, we're carefully threading to look at other programs in other cities and areas and trying to do uh a good program without having to be in those predicaments of other cities and counties uh situations. And those include some uh bad actors and those include some bad choices. So moving forward, I really would suggest to our council and the leadership here that you think more forthright when it comes to how this program looks for the city of Hawthorne and how we could create it to make our own. The cannabis consultants that are selected would take direction from the council, and it's gonna be up to them to provide us good counsel. But moreover, we're gonna be able to provide them exactly what this uh program ultimately should look like. What was important to me is the diversity, it's the diversity and inclusion to assure that everyone is welcome to the table. I looked at all eight of the consultants that uh had interviews with us via Zoom some time ago. And that was something that was important to me, that's a come, I made a lot of questions and I made a lot of requests. Some of those were satisfactory and others weren't. But at the end of the day, the selection has made, has been made, and it's now up to us to give marching orders to EJMA on how it is that we want this program to look, more moreover, serve the community of Hawthorne. And we're gonna make sure to assure that that policy is drafted in a way that is similar to cities that are working today in cannabis programs that are prospering. So that's my hope. And that's what I want to speak moving forward is is again, keeping away from everything that's been negative and been said, and we haven't even started. And it's like, you guys are in a sense, I shouldn't say you guys, but the council members and leaders here some are already speaking ill will, and that's not the way to be a leader, nor is it to show uh what a program that we have an opportunity to do looks like. And so I hope everybody can, will contribute in some way to the businesses, the businesses of our, that are ultimately gonna be uh providing a a benefit and moreover uh economically to the city.
Oh, okay, and.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to respond to that. I think there is some sentiment that uh that we don't have the right to give our opinions, and I think I I I object to that. We have a right to consider carefully our choices. You don't have to agree with my choice, and I don't have to agree with your choice, but I considered my choice very carefully based on the experience and the uh the 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 experience and the education of the people who were who were um who the other choices. Cannabis Public Policy Consulting was clearly, as far as I was concerned, head and shoulders above the others. SCI was also extremely good. The other one was not as good as the others, clearly not as good. And I don't mind saying it, and I don't mind expressing my view, because I think about things very carefully. And I don't make my choices based on emotion or diversity, I make it based on qualifications. Thank you.
Right, so uh so that's, those are, those are the separate opinions, I don't think there's, I mean, look, I I gave you my reasons.
Yeah, we we talked and we, you know, and it's all good, because everybody's entitled, but to speak about. I don't know where emotions came from, but anyway. Everybody's entitled to their opinion.
Okay, I I wanna make a comment. Um I my comment is basically, when, if you guys remember, I'm just gonna be straight about this, when we, when you guys remember when we ranked these before. EJMA was not the top choice, okay? So if 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 EJMA was the top, no, if EJMA was pre-selected and the top choice, I think we, it would have ranked highly above. So I just, I think people uh on the council have chosen the their, the the group that they thought fit at this stage, based on whatever information they had and were given. So I wouldn't go so far as to say that it was pre-selected. Um but um everybody does have a right to their opinion, I told you, I told you guys why I chose somebody else. But this is the group that uh we're going to work with and we gotta make it work. We're gonna make it work, and that that's pretty much it. But everybody's entitled to their opinion, everyone. Go ahead, Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, I have to say uh amen to all the discussion, it was wonderful, right? But just keep in mind that at the end, we will see the result, we'll see the outcome. So now we have to move forward. And and to me, uh EJMA, the reason that I vote for it is because uh the leader is a planner. She is a, you know, she have a planner degree. Uh and the others, the second in charge is a prosecutor, used to be a prosecutor, a lawyer. So I believe we're in a good hands that for us to come up with the cannabis program that will fit the seat of Hawthorne, like Ms. English put it, very eloquent. So uh we just need to move forward, so thank you.
Councilmember Montero, I just wanted to address that too, thank you. And the reality is, if we don't like the product they give us, we don't have to agree.
Exactly. We are the decision maker.
At the end of the, throughout the process, and everyone from myself, Councilmember Montero, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, Councilwoman English, uh and Councilmember uh Patterson should speak out when they don't like anything as the process goes along. Public, whatever it is, and call something out. I mean, at that point, we need to just be straight up and open with each other. Uh it's a, it's a very, this has, we have to proceed very carefully because of all, you have to when it comes to this type of thing, so.
And Mister Mayor, just remember that when we create a contract, it would be a a termination language. If we don't like what's going on, we can terminate the contract in thirty days. So there will be language there to protect us.
At any point, I I personally encourage all of my colleagues to bring out anything that they find. Uh and you know, just do not stay quiet. Actually, I would have looked at this discussion to have taken place before we voted, that's why I called for this, and nobody spoke, so. I'm not taking any sides on this stuff.
Right.
I would have preferred the group I chose, but you know, that's the way. Okay, so, but we're good. So let's just move on, guys, I don't think we need to, you know, and uh thank you everybody for their comments. I just don't wanna see everybody like. But all the points have been well taken. All right, uh I, Mister Interim City Manager, the agenda reflects you have items twenty-two to twenty-six on the city manager's consent calendar. Uh please proceed by introducing each item into the record.
Great. Item twenty-two is progress payment number five in the amount of one million seven hundred seventy-seven, six, one, twelve, point eighty-one to Silistic Contractors Corporation, DBA, Shaunery of Downey, California for project number twenty dash one-two Prairie Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two. We have item twenty-three is a purchase of a Vimmer uh branch chipper. Item twenty-four is approval of a purchase order to Everett and Associates in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Item twenty-five is progress payment number six in the amount of three hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents due to Martinez Landscape Corporation, Inc. of Silmar, California for general maintenance, project number fifteen dash zero-two. Item twenty-six is to appoint Mike, excuse me, Miguel Mike Toledo, owner of Shoreline Realities and president of Wounded Heroes of America, was nominated to serve on the South Bay Workforce Invest- Investment Board as a representative of the private business sector in Hawthorne. The term would expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
To the chair.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Uh I'd like to pull item twenty-six for discussion, please.
I move on all other items?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The voter reflects mayor, council members voting yes.
Discussion item twenty-six.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just curious because um I've been part of the Federation, uh the Buzzfeed Federation of Labor and uh business, and um I know there's uh also the Hawthorne uh Economic Development Council. Um I was just curious, uh I thought the chamber represented the business aspect, but if the chamber's not part of this, I want to know why there weren't other names provided for an opportunity, uh you know, well versed consideration, considering there's um business groups here in Hawthorne, and I don't remember uh Mister Toledo participating in those groups, so I was just considering other names and how was he appointed versus a pool of people to make the selection? How was he nominated to the um South Bay Workforce and other groups, people's names that sat on those boards were not?
Um I nominated uh Mister Toledo to uh sit on the board. Um the um, there is another member already on the board uh from LA Ale Works. Uh and uh Mister um the the person who was on the board was um the manager of uh of the Marriott Hotel, but he, his assignment was changed and he was no longer able to sit on the board. So he and the manager of the uh LA Ale Works had been the two on the board representing Hawthorne. But when he had to leave the board, uh an opening was created. So I nominated Mike Toledo. Now, um the the, he has not been appointed, that's the job of the council tonight to appoint him, but I nominated him.
Is the Chamber of Commerce, Pat Donaldson, is she still on the South Bay business portion of that?
Of what?
Of the South Bay workforce.
I don't know.
But you're making the appointment, don't you sit on the South Bay workforce?
I do not sit on, I am on the CY, I'm on CYS board, I'm not on the the South Bay with board.
Uh to the cha- I believe we, uh I believe in uh the, in the beginning of the year, we replaced Pat Donaldson with the gentleman from the Marriott Courtyard.
That's correct, council member.
Okay, so there's.
That was an action taken by the city council purposely.
That's correct.
Purposely, I mean, it was a.
Purposely.
Yeah, well, it was, it was done, was thought out. So, I mean, to answer your question with regards to the Chamber of Commerce, Pat Donaldson. So um I believe that this specific moment, this is not something that comes to us directly through the city manager, which would be a call for nominations. If you, if somebody's aware of a vacancy on this, they nominate individuals and put this on the agenda. Anybody could have put something like this on the agenda, but go ahead.
I'm, I, this is the first that I'm hearing of an opportunity to name somebody to a board by the council. So that's why, that's why I'm like, I was never, I was never uh given by South Bay workforce Jan Vogels calling me or emailing me saying, please consider some business folks. Jan Vogels calling me or emailing me saying, please consider some business folks for our board.
He actually, he actually did contact the city manager and ask for someone to represent us.
Okay, well, I was not aware of that. I never got that information to the full council. Obviously, you were the only one.
I was not the only one.
But obviously, tonight you were the only one, 'cause nobody seems to know what occurred and how the nomination was processed. You're the only one that's telling me how it was done. There's other people in the community that have served on the Hawthorne Development Council Board, on BizFed, and other entities of this city that have obviously been overlooked. And this is the whole thing that's happening currently with regards to uh, redundancy, stagnation, and businesses not moving forward, because all of a sudden you have someone that ha- that that, from what I understand, has not participated in a business meeting.
Are you, are you aware of other people who want to be on the WHIB board?
Yes, I am. That's a come, I'm I'm curious how the selection was made.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Toledo to make a statement about himself and his qualifications. And I think um, I I think his qualifications speak for themselves. Mr. Toledo, would you please go ahead?
Can you, do you have a video that you could open up to, sir? Mr. Toledo.
Mr. Toledo, are you there?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, Olivia and I had a conversation about the, a few things, and she suggested that um, that I might consider a position uh, with the uh, South Bay Investment Board. And I've served on the Oversight Board for the um, Redevelopment Agency. I served on the Planning Commission. I've been a business owner in Hawthorne since I was twenty-five years old. I started a nonprofit that's pretty successful. So in terms of being able to make good decisions, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I was asked to serve, like I was, I've been asked to serve on the Planning Commission, and I I was asked to serve on the uh, Hawthorne School Board, um, Citizens Oversight Board. So I've served on several commissions within the city. And um, I thought that uh, I didn't, you know, this was not a city commission, but it was a good, it was a good uh, choice. You know, and and if I don't get approved by this, uh, I'm not gonna commit suicide or anything, you know, I I uh, I would like the opportunity to uh, to serve and learn, but I think that my strengths are in in running, making decisions and running businesses, and know what a business it takes to to be successful. I mean, you know, I haven't had a, I haven't had a position uh, less than owner, president, and founder and CEO uh, since I was twenty-seven years old. So, uh, sitting on a board about uh, is is uh, nothing that I'm concerned about. Now, the process of who you pick, uh, you know, that's up to you. But uh, do I feel like I could do that job? Certainly, certainly. That's it. Uh, I didn't seek the appointment. I was uh, asked if I would, uh, if it was offered, would I, would I consider? I said, yeah, I would. And so that's it. It's nothing, there's nothing sinister in this. Uh, I was asked to serve, like I've been asked to serve before, and I said, okay.
Is there a motion and a second, please?
I move Mike Toledo uh, be appointed as representative of Hawthorne on the South Bay Workforce Investment Board.
I'll second that.
And just before you take the vote, um, to address uh, Mr. Toledo, it has nothing to do with your experience, uh, with all due respect, Mike. It has nothing to do with your experience. It was just a simple discussion about how the appointment was made with no other council members getting an opportunity for names. That's all.
Roll call vote, please. Uh, Councilmember Montero.
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson.
You know, I would like to have been able to nominate somebody or or been involved in the process some way, so, 'cause I'm um abstaining.
Abstaining, okay. Councilmember Reyes English.
No.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
All right, the vote reflects mayor and two council members voting yes, Councilmember Patterson abstaining, and Councilmember Reyes English, no. Item number twenty-eight, the city attorney's consent calendar, please. Mister Mister Interim City Attorney, your item for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, the city attorney consent calendar only has one item for your approval and motion. It's the, we're recommending to uh, deny the claim of Joshua Torres for damages arising from an alleged motorcycle accident.
I make a motion.
Second.
Um, the second goes to Montero. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Valentine.
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, there's, there are two discussion items. The first one is for Councilwoman uh, Reyes English. The second one will be for Councilmember Patterson. So the first one is a discussion action item, number thirty, to consider increasing the fine for the violation of preferential parking. Councilmember Reyes English, this item was brought to the agenda at your request, so please proceed. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanna ma- uh, make a direction to the city attorney, and I do understand that there's further study that needs to be made to make an assessment of all communities with regards to what their current uh, pay schedule is. Uh, I should say their fees and fines for uh, these types of infractions, if they're infractions, uh, having to do with uh, preferential parking and other uh, potential um, citations. So um, I'll just ask that you make um, uh, an analysis of that, if you would, and then just bring that back to us.
I will.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I would just like to um, add, uh, just comment, not nothing, I would still like to see that report. But uh, interim city attorney, is this one of those things where like the state limits what we can chart uh, penalties? Or or no, it's it's something that we just do, that you'll have to research. I'm just saying.
The what it requires is under the state law vehicle code, uh, it requires cities to, when they assess a parking fee schedule, uh, to compare it and be in line with other cities in the county.
Okay.
So, that's the reason why we need to study more uh, parking fee schedule for other cities around the area.
So, so, so who's the person, so there has to be a city that in, takes it uh, past a certain ceiling, right? The, so if this city takes it a little higher, then somebody can have a little, and it starts inching up little by little. Is that what it looks like, or what?
Typically, what it turns out is that the the last city to have this approved and set a new fee schedule, they tend to have a little bit higher than others, but it doesn't deviate much. Um, so.
Councilmember Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit, because you know, when you, when you recall that we put a moratorium on the preferential parking, right? Because we got a lot of people coming to complain about the preferential parking that at at night, people would walk blocks away to park, and then those preferential parking was like empty, nobody were parking there, right? So we know we have a parking problem, and and when I analyze what the city attorneys gave us on the, on the confidential, so the the highest one is in Santa Monica, that is about fifty-five dollar, and the closest is in Inglewood at fifty-one dollar. And our current rate is forty-eight dollar, right? So, so I'm thinking that, you know, because we have a problem parking issues in Hawthorne, it's not just generated by the resident, but it's by the density, and 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 we're trying to solve the problem about parking. To me, you know, because of this current situation of COVID and and people struggling paying their rent, I would say, you know, it's not the right time to thinking about increasing the parking, preferential parking violation, because it's not gonna make us reach your pole, 'cause it's just from from five dollar, six dollar. But I think what we need to do is to come up with a solution, how we're going to address the parking issue for every resident. Uh, because some of them did get that preferential parking, but then we put a moratorium, it was to study if the, if the, if the preferential park was working or not, and we never got that studied up. So I'm just thinking that uh, to me, I I'm sorry, Miss English, but I I don't think it's gonna solve the problem.
No, oh, well, to the chair.
You can respond to it, go go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. No, I'm not trying to resolve the problem. Uh, I think in my uh, time, uh, that I've been out in um, ride-alongs and made my observations, and then also while I was in the state, and I was working with Chief Feger at the time, to discuss how City of Hawthorne could get its fair share. These were some of the things that we discussed, uh, where oftentimes, other cities are, in a sense, um, um, making their uh, I should say their fee schedules, their fines, et cetera, comparable to um, cities of similar populations and things like this. So what I wanted to do initially was to address the preferential parking aspect of it, where you have uh, bad actors that are parking in preferential parking without a permit, doing it purposely, because the fine to them was nothing. They they could pay the fine, and at the end of the day, and they did what they did, and it's done and over with, they're probably not gonna come back again, or they might. It's neither here or there, but from what I understand, to assure that we have an adequate accounting of sorts, to assure that we're doing our due diligence, a further survey should be made to see what other cities and and areas similar in population are doing to address their uh, parking situation. So it's the parking situation here in Hawthorne, as we all know it, and there was a comparison that we all made, that we're all on board and thinking the same way, was how we could work with public works, and we just did this recently, giving them discretion on how we could find other um, uh, thinking out of the box, ways of parking here in our city that would include streets that are normally not street parking. Uh, you know, they're just one, one parking on one sides and things like this. So, um, I think what I wanna do, just in in a direction which I've already given, is to make a more um, feasible uh, outlook, feasible study of of other areas and cities broader, and then come back. And then anything else having to do with parking, ha- uh, we've already did that item uh, last, you know, city council and gave them direction. So two different things here, there's two different things, but I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Montero. I I get what you're saying with regards to moratoriums on preferential parking preferences, where there's only one or two cars parked on that street that ultimately could have been leveraged and opened up for other cars. I get that. I do get that. Uh, unfortunately, um, we need to, we need to continue to um, ultimately um, not, not, not allow for that to go any further until we really get this parking situation, uh, you know, uh, fixed. However, two different things, two different things that we're talking about.
I'd like to just give my final comments uh, uh, as well on this, uh, this, the parking situation is something that was not created yesterday, was created over two or three decades, thirty, forty years, you know, when the high density issue. We've, we've talked about it, and we've uh, argued it ad nauseam. The moratorium on the preferential parking is one element, because it just passes the problem from this street. Now they start parking on this street, now it keeps going and keeps going. We had a former city clerk that you guys remember would always come. Never spoke up about the problem or anything else on any other issues, but when it affected his mother-in-law's street, he was very active about that. You remember that, right? So, no, but, I mean, that aside, um, uh, I would like to maintain the moratorium on the, on the parking, preferential parking. There could be other solutions with our, with our police department that could be had, just like we found on one-sixteenth. Um, and some other solutions through public works. The T-parking that we're going to experiment with in a specific area of the city, to see how that works out, to see if that's something that will increase the parking availability is is very important. What I do want to address, once we establish the T-parking, and once we spread that out, apart from the uh, increased fines for the violation of preferential parking, I would like to add it for the next agenda, uh, city manager Von Norris, and in, you know, our chief and the city, city attorney, if you could add an agenda to increase, to set the uh, fines for the violation of the T-parking. So we, we have the T-parking there, what what are we gonna do once they violate it? There might be some set fines that we have in place for that. I would like to hear what those are, and how we can increase that uh, to an appropriate level, where where it will uh, prevent people and discourage people from violating the T-parking. 'Cause what if we have the T-parking, two spaces that are marked out, and what if somebody still wants to be a uh, and park their car in the middle?
That's part, yeah, that's all, that's all part of the parking violations that we.
Yeah, I like, yeah, so yours is for the preferential parking area?
No, not necessarily.
Well, okay.
That's a come tonight, I said, uh, to do, uh, you know, an assessment, right? Uh, to increase, not just preferential, it has to be all, all violations.
But I still like to discuss this on the next.
Okay. Okay.
That specific issue. So, yeah, no, if you could already roll that into this, that'd be great.
For for clarification, uh, what I'm gonna do is, and I take this as directive as this, that uh, we're gonna come back with analysis of, I will include more cities for all violations of parking, 'cause instead of just targeting one specific type or two types
Right.
of violations. So all violations will be listed, and um, and then maybe I'll provide a legal confidential with all that analysis. And then the council can instruct further as to what we should go from there.
And you got my structure, you got my. Uh, Von?
Thanks, Kim.
Yes, I I did receive your directive.
Thank you so much, uh, city council. Item number thirty-one, discussion action item number thirty-one, is to consider an annual fireworks show at the ci- in the city of Hawthorne. Councilmember Patterson, uh, you brought it to the, to the agenda. Please proceed.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we had a a great conversation last, Councilman, about fireworks in the city of Hawthorne. I I think in um, maybe a great idea for the city to sponsor fireworks show for the entire city. I think uh, having such an event uh, might reduce just the amount of fireworks that individual people choose to um, uh, uh, you know, choose to handle themselves. Um, uh, you know, I think fireworks, whether they're safe and sane or or illegal, you know, there there can be some uh, risk to to handling those. I know, uh, years ago, uh, when my daughter was young, I used to go to cities that specifically had uh, firework programs, uh, that they would, you know, have them at a park or or to high school, and um, we used to patronize those, those type of events over doing our own fireworks. So I believe it came up in a previous conversation that that's some of the efforts from some other cities who are trying to kind of reduce um, illegal fireworks in their cities to kind of find an alternative uh, for the community. So I think that uh, this, so I want to throw that out there and have a discussion about, I think it'd be something that the community would enjoy.
Uh, I would like to just chime in, Councilmember Patterson. Um, I would like to support the idea of a fireworks show as as an added thing to do for the community, something that they could uh, all go to, and just start kind of bringing some of the things we used to have in the past. Um, and over the years, economically, we did it, we're unable to, so finding uh, the resources to do this, I think would be great. Although I don't think it's going to really impact the illegal fireworks uh, situation. I would still just, I s- I would still like to support an annual fireworks show, or and take a look at it just for the simple fact of entertainment for our community, something that they deserve, and maybe we do find that it does reduce it. So, um, I'd like to, I'd like to take a look at that and support you on that. Any comments else? Uh, Montero, Councilmember Montero?
Um, I would suggest that um, for us to maybe come up with a partnership with Longdale and the Sentinel Valley School District, because uh, if we decide that, for example, if we're gonna try to get one of the high schools, uh, so people can have more access to sit down and see the show, uh, to create a partnership between Longdale, City, Hawthorne, and the, and Sentinel Valley. And also, maybe forces start talking about, because remember, uh, last. And also maybe forces start talking about, because remember, uh, last year, uh, we proposed, we voted. That because of the, uh, Cent- uh, Hawthorne Centennial Anniversary. That we probably were gonna have a Fourth of July parade. And then maybe after the parade, uh, you know, could, could be in the late evening. Uh, it's about eight o'clock, we can do like the fireworks show. Uh, but I think we should do it in a collaboration with this, with Longdale and Sentinel Valley and ourselves. Maybe could, could help us, uh, you know. With the cost, because I think, uh, fireworks show could cost us, up to fifty thousand dollars. So just to think about that.
Thank you. And, um, I see Losinger High as being a mid, midpoint. Where both come together as opposed to be a deep in Hawthorne or deep in Longdale. Um, it's kind of worked out. Uh, Councilmember Race English, you were on the PTA and you remember those fireworks show. Um, I know you had, you had to, go ahead.
Yeah, it was a great event, uh, with the school district, Losinger High School. We would use the football, uh, area. And, uh, we would have families on the bleachers, um, in the arena there observing. It was a great event. Uh, people arrived before sundown and they would get their, their, their space. And then, uh, after it was over with, uh, everybody left home and it was peaceful. And it was, um, just as enjoyable as, you know, having it at your home. Um, but this is something I think that could, um, again, be, be, uh. Um, something in good spirit and in efforts to bring, um. Cities together and the school district, uh, along with, uh, you know, Longdale. And those that, uh, ultimately want to partner, they would have the space. We don't have that space. The other area I thought about was, um. The Hawthorne Memorial Center over in the parking lot where they do, uh, motorcycle, um. Uh, training back there. That was the only area I thought, you know, of potential, uh, fireworks show. But I, I don't know where the people, the audience would be able to sit to view that. So the, the other thing was, uh, you know, the, the auditorium or the, the football stadium over at Losinger. Which was actually a good, a good venue.
Um, so, okay, so it looks like, uh, we have a, kind of a consensus here of, uh, looking into that. Um, Councilmember Patterson, would you, you feel that, you know, we'd like, you would like to instruct the staff to take a look at the budget for something like this? Or how do you like?
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought everything everybody said was, was great. Uh, Mr. City Manager, if you can, um, look into that and bring back some options for us. Um, you know, let us know what the cost would be and, and if any of those other agencies would be interested in partnering up.
Totally. I'll prepare, um, uh, analysts on site costs and the pros and cons of having the event, uh, the request from you.
Pros, but you're gonna look for the pros, right? Not the cons? I don't know. I don't like what, I don't like how you've been talking to us today. Now, let's.
Write the best report to the council.
We need to know what, you know, the, you know, the pros and cons. You're right. Okay, uh. So, okay, so thank you. Uh, we do have elected official reports recommendations. Are you guys okay with, would you guys like to go into a closed session, do that at the end? Or would you guys like to do the discussions, uh, the reports beforehand?
Uh, Mr. Mr. Mayor, I request that we do the, uh, the elected official reports first. I'm still trying to get a hold of our, uh, council for the closed session.
Okay, so then that's important. That's good that you mentioned that. Let's take a look here. Let's see who's available. Okay, City Treasurer, Allen, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Council. Great meeting. Um, yeah, there was some news out about cities that were in trouble and Hawthorne wasn't on it. That was great. Um, we're doing really well and, uh, hopefully that continues and I know it should. Um, and also just wanted to comment on, uh, you know. A few other items. Let's, I can bring them up. Yeah, um.
Do you wanna share something?
Oh, actually, that's it. Thank you.
O- okay, I thought you were gonna share something on the screen. Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, if you could give us, uh, City Treasurer, if you could give us a, uh, general report. Uh, maybe next meeting on the, on the city's finances from your perspective, from your purview, okay?
Will do. Cheers.
Yeah, that'd be nice to hear about that. Okay, thank you. Uh, City Clerk, Jimenez, go ahead, sir.
All right, I'll keep it short. I just have, uh, two comments. So first of all, I just wanna remind the community that we're continuing to hold our fresh produce giveaways, um, from ten AM to twelve PM on Saturday. In front of City Hall. I wanna thank all the volunteers and the American Heart Association who provides the produce. A report actually came out today that there's a huge surge of children and young adults. Uh, who are diagnosed with type two diabetes and it's directly linked with the amount of sugar and fast food that they're eat, consuming. So if you have any children who are in need of fresh fruit and vegetables, please have them come, please, you know, come by City Hall and we'll provide you some fruit produce. Um, and then in regards to COVID nineteen, um, I'd say it, I'll keep saying it, if you have it, please get vaccinated. Also, when you are indoors in a public setting, please wear your masks. And for information on locations and where to get vaccinated, please go to vaccinate la county dot com. That's all on my end. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Race English?
Yes, hi, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things, um. We're gonna be having, or I'm gonna be partnering with, um. Uh, let me, let me say it correctly. It's, uh, it's called The Drive. And it's basically, uh, an organization that brings youth together for sports and training. And so look forward to partnering with them on a backpack giveaway. We're looking to do that on, in September fifth on a Sunday. Uh, more information is on the website and additional information with regards to, um. How you could, uh, support the efforts are on the flyer at, uh, W W W the drive nation dot com backslash donate. So look forward to that. I also would like to thank staff for, uh, the tour we currently took with the city of, uh, West Hollywood. And had an opportunity to visit, uh, cannabis businesses there and get an, an, a better idea. Of, uh, how they've been, uh, successfully doing, uh, a cannabis program since twenty sixteen. And so I wanna thank everyone that participated in that. I, I wanna thank, uh, Jackie, Public Works Director with the City of West Hollywood. That provided us with a lot of great information and, um, policy and legislation and their ordinances, which is very helpful. Uh, I look forward to visiting other businesses that are similar and get the ideas that they have already, um, implemented in their cities. Um, I'd just like to thank, um, again, our, our employees that are working hard to. Uh, reach out to our business community to let them know, uh, how to apply for business assistance. And then also for the housing department, uh, folks that are, um, submitting their assist, their applications for rental assistance. And I wanna thank, uh, Kimberly over in the, the housing department that's working in efforts to bring all of us, uh, to the community. Um, and there's been residents that have been reaching out to me and asking me, what's the status of their application that I've applied? I wanna make sure that we're going through those. I also wanna make sure, um, folks are being notified on, uh, where their current application is in the process. I know it's a lot of work for a lot of individuals in the housing department. Um, but at the end of the day, uh, we have to make sure that we utilize all the funds to exhaustion, to assure that. Uh, that they're exhausted, to assure that, uh, as many residents were assisted. Um. Other than that, oh, don't forget, uh. Today is an election day, or I should say vote by mail. So I had an opportunity to do that today. I voted and I hope that you will too. Um, and it's Kobe Day, Kobe Day in LA, uh, on the twenty-fourth. Uh, had an opportunity to attend his, his, uh, memorial. Uh, it was very emotional, very, very, um, sad day for the city of LA. And I also had an opportunity to meet him on Kobe Day, uh, where Councilman Price, uh, honored him in council. And ultimately will have, uh, the Figueroa area of the Staples Center named in his honor. So that's something that's still, uh, going through the process. However, um, all you Laker fans out there, um, on Laker Day. So thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember. Um, let's see, Councilmember David Patterson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Wanna thank, uh, the community who's running, putting in and. Uh, especially those members that decided to take some time out of their schedule to call in and. Make your voice is heard, uh, whether you called in or not, definitely appreciate you for taking time out of your schedule for just. Uh, 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 being involved in the process and staying up to date on what's happening in your city. Wanna thank staff for all the hard, hard work that you do. Um, I know that our city's going through a little bit of transition with a number of open positions out there. So a lot of staff members having to kind of do some extra work. And so I definitely appreciate, uh, the commitment that you guys have. Um, in addition to that though, you know, I appreciated the, the lively discussion and debate that we had today. Um, appreciate the fact we're ending at a pretty good time. Um, and you know, wanna, wanna, um. Welcome all the students back to school. Um, I know I have a, a number of friends and, you know. Children of those friends, family members who started school this last week and, and my daughter's going back to college next month. And, um, I know for hers, it'll be her first time going to college in person. Um, cause she graduated high school, you know, everything was shut down. So I, I wish everybody success and luck and a healthy experience. And, um, you know, I wish that they can really, you know, enjoy their in-person, um, academic experience. Uh, you know, way many of us had the opportunity to do so when we grew up. So that's it. Thanks a lot.
Okay, Councilmember Alex Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, again, thank you, staff. Thank you, the public for participating in our meeting, uh, special, these, those head departments that's been working. Uh, to make sure that the city's running accordingly. I wanna congratulate, uh, Von and, um. And the negotiating team for the MOU that we just approved for the HBOA. And, uh, and all the two groups that we just approved tonight. Um, outstanding work, uh, that we're gonna have, uh, a three-year contract with our, uh, HBOA, H, H, HPMS. So, and, um, those was, um, u- outstanding work. Uh, thank you, uh, our Internet City Manager and Ms. Ullman for negotiating the contract. So thank you for the police officers and the other M E G to agree, uh, to three year. And that shows that, that we're working on a good faith and we value all the, the employees. So thank you for that. Uh. I wanna thank also the police department and, and also for the chief to give us an update. You know, the, uh, homeless in camps that they clean up on one oh five and Oxford Avenue and Prairie Avenue. So thank you for that. Uh, uh, it was good to, to clean it up. Uh, just FY, uh, on the ramp of, uh, one oh five going east out of the Crenshaw behind the, uh. Almost behind the twenty-four, there is some, a few little in camps in there starting to pop up. So I just saw them yesterday when I was taking that ramp, uh, from Crenshaw to the one oh five. Um, I just want to remind everybody that on August thirty-first. That our housing department in collaboration with the, uh, um, Housing Rights Center is gonna have a rental relief workshop. At Memorial Center. So keep everybody show up there. August thirty-first from nine AM to twelve PM. Uh, that will be assistance to, to, for you to help you fill up all, all the necessary document for, uh, rental assistance, okay? Uh, so more opportunity to help you to pay your rent. Um, like, uh, Mr. David Perrin said, was back to school last week. Uh, from the, from the little ones to the high schools. And Hawthorne School District, uh, has collaborated with the South Bay Adult and also the Health District. Is going to provide, uh, free vaccine clinic. On, um, Thursday, September second, from three thirty to five thirty PM. Uh, there will be vaccine for chi- children that is twelve plus. School staffs and families that is part of the Hawthorne School District. So free vaccine on September second, from three thirty to five thirty. And then we'll have the second dose of the fiber vaccine on September twenty-third. So it's gonna be at the South Campus, uh, Adult School that is right there on, on, uh. Thirty, thirty-four, zero, one Inglewood Avenue on Redondo Beach, California, okay? So for more information, they can call Ken, three, seven, four, thirty-four, twenty-six. Again, three, one, zero, three, seven, four, thirty-four, twenty-six. So it's, it's a back-to-school vaccination day. Um. Again, you know, and just wanna say thank you to all of you for outstanding meeting and about the, uh. Thank you for the selecting of the cannabis consultant that is gonna help the city of Hawthorne put something in place. Like I said, we are the, the leader of the city. We're going to make the decision. It's not the consultant group. So we're going to, once going to be review all the applicants, all the ideas they're gonna put in, on, on the table. They're gonna have to bring it to us for us to decide if that is, is what we need for Hawthorne. So it's, it's gonna be a total process, a vent process, transparent process that is going to take place. Um, I wanna also thanks the, uh, Mr. Tyrone Thompson for that presentation about secondhand smoke. Because I, you know, I'm allergic to, to smoke. So, uh, anything I can do, I will help to stop the secondhand smoke. Because, uh, every time I pass by any smoke, I sneeze, you know, my eyes get, so I'm with him. So anything's to do to come up with an ordinance to do Hawthorne, but to be part of the series of the handsmoke free. I'm for it, okay? So thank you for that. Um, and I think, you know, that's it. So like I said, you know, it's been a great summer. Thanks God that, you know, some of us is still healthy. Uh, but like Dr. Jimenez said, please get the vaccine. Because the vaccine, you know, even, even it doesn't cure COVID. But even if you got COVID, you don't die. Okay, because the, the symptoms is mild. So you can still get COVID even when you vaccinated, but the symptoms are mild. You don't be on, on hospital bed with ventilation and, and incubators. So please help us get rid of this COVID Delta variant that. Because the things were starting to get moving and then suddenly we have to deal with this Delta variant. So please get, uh, the vaccination. And now we have the Pfizer vaccine that's been approved by FDA. So go and get it and it's still free, okay? And remember, in some other countries, they are struggled to get vaccine and we have millions of those that is free for you. So God bless and good night.
Uh, Councilmember Montero, the dates for the World Festival?
Oh, yeah, the World Festival is gonna be on September eighteen, Saturday, September eighteen, from ten AM to six PM. You're ready, we already have, it's gonna be a multicultural festival that we're gonna have different, uh, foods from different countries. We're gonna have, uh, music, uh, from, you know, from Africa to Latin America, to South America, to reggae, uh, to mariachi. So we have a whole, uh, program that is gonna be full of music and dancing folklore. So enjoying us is free. Uh, you ju- won't you have to pay for the food because, you know, you have to buy the food for the.
Give me that, give me that day and time again.
Uh, Saturday, September eighteen, from ten AM to six PM at the Hawthorne Memorial Center Park.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There's one go back from Councilmember English?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I totally, uh, uh, forgot. Um, first of all, let me make two comments to the City Clerk's office. Um, thank you for the, um, second batch of opposition to fireworks that was sent to us. All the council received it. There was additional letters that were received. I have, uh, gone through them and I saw them. And I wanna just acknowledge those individuals, uh, the other side to that, the opposition for, for and against. And they should be addressed too. Everybody has an opportunity to, to, uh, provide their feedback and they have. Uh, having said that, I'd like to see how we could, um, move forward as suggested with a proposition on the ballot. For, um, the fireworks, uh, and give it to the people to decide. Uh, since it's been mentioned a couple of times with regards to proposition on a ballot to see where the people, uh. What the people's choice is on fireworks. So I'll leave that for, for that. And then just lastly, I just, uh, wanna thank you again, City Clerk's Office for sending us the, um, estimated twenty-two election cost. And that's gonna be part of the proposition that's gonna go towards, uh, on, I should say, on that election, if you would. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Proton Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, today I attended a League of California Cities webinar discussing league opposition to bills SB nine, AB nine eight nine. Fourteen oh one and two fifteen. These bills would all threaten us as local decision makers to have a voice in land use decisions in our own jurisdictions. These bills have passed through committee and may be voted on as early as this week. The league is requesting that we, we rescind our letters of opposition if we have already sent them. And to sign on to the league's letter of opposition. I think they said they have about a hundred and twenty signatories on their letter. SB nine has already been opposed by three members of this council. It would require a local government to ministerially approve a housing development containing two residential units. In single-family residential zones. It would also require local governments to ministerially approve lot splits. AB fourteen oh one, I believe, uh, Mr. Kim, correct me if. AB fourteen oh one, I believe, uh, Mr. Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, has already been opposed by this council. It would prohibit a local government from imposing a parking requirement on a developer if the development was in a a half-mile walking distance of public transit. This would turn over our local transit decisions to developers. As to SB nine and fourteen oh one, as requested by the league, I am directing staff to rescind our letters of opposition and to sign on to the league's letter. Now, AB nine eight nine nine and AB two fifteen have not been considered by this council. And I am directing staff to put them on the agenda as discussion action items for the council meeting of September fourth and hoping it won't be too late because they they could very well be voted on before we meet again. AB nine eight nine would create an Office of Housing Appeals, which could overturn a city's action if a developer accuses the city of violating the Housing Accountability Act. The developer could take the city before this body instead of having to to go directly to court, creating an unnecessary layer of bureaucracy. AB two fourteen, so as to AB two, I'm sorry, as to AB two fifteen, usually the Attorney General decides whether to prosecute a city for violating the Housing Abil- Accountability Act. If AB two fifteen passes, the housing and community development could hire private counsel to prosecute a city if the AG decides not to do so. So all of these bills are coming at us as cities um from Sacramento, um year after year after year in an attempt to eliminate cities' abilities to make their own land use decisions. It is really important that cities push back against this. It is also important that the residents pay attention and write to their city, um and write to their state representatives. Now, again, uh SB nine and fourteen oh one, it's expected that they will be considered this week. And I'm urging residents to write to uh to write and call your assembly members and your 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 assembly member, which is Autumn Burke, and your state senator, which is Steve Bradford, and 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 make your voices heard on these. Um, uh, so and 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 please pay attention to what is going on because there is a big push for transit-oriented development. And if all of the the bills go through, as they're trying to do in Sacramento, we won't recognize our city. Our 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 single-family residents uh neighborhoods will be gone. We have to be really careful in in making sure that we push back against these things. Um, on the re- on the recall, if you haven't already, uh, you should have received your ballots by now. Please vote. Don't lose your ballots. There are many places to go and all and and the places uh the the locations for the ballots are on your ballot. The locations where you can go to mail them are on your ballots. Make sure you um make sure you vote. Please vote. Um, uh, very important that you vote. I want to thank um all of the people who participated in the homeless encampment cleanup, Public Works, the Police Department, City Manager and Staff, and the Homeless Task Force, Jesse Ramirez and everyone else. That was an awesome, awesome task that you 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 accomplished. And um I saw the pictures of of the of the cleanup, and they really, it really made quite a difference. I'm to- I'm very worried, however, that cleaning up one side of the freeway means that the other side, cuz I think that Councilmember Montero alluded to that. And I too saw some, um, it looked like some homeless encampments were resurging on the other side of the freeway. So I'm I'm hoping that we can keep it from, keep it moving and 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 not have it to have the encampments just move from one side of the freeway to the other. But thank you all for all those who participated. It's so important that we put a good face on our city, and that's certainly a way to do it. So thank you all. That's all I have. Good night.
All right, thank you very much. Um, interim city manager, Bond Norris?
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I just ask a group of questions to Councilmember Valentine?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I know that other cities have already voted, not necessarily a letter to be sent, but they've already just voted in a um resolution or whatever it is that we need to do if we're in opposition to SB, if I'm correct, nine and ten. Um, so I I was gonna suggest, instead of a letter, why don't you just bring a resolution to the next council meeting so it could be read out, whereas, you know?
We voted on nine and ten already. We actually voted.
Oh, I thought it was just a letter.
No, we sent the letter, but it was based on the vote that we took.
Okay, all right.
It's 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 not nine and ten that's in question now. It's AB, it's uh, and I think, I think, Mr. Kim, didn't we vote on also on AB fourteen oh one?
Um, I believe we did, cuz I recall um that we did vote on several, through several resolutions on the ABs and and SB nine and SB ten. I recall hearing something about the the parking uh uh language in the AB fourteen oh one. So I believe we did. I didn't get a chance to review it before the council meeting, but I could check on that.
Yes, would you please? And um as to the other ones, again, um nine eight nine and eight and two fifteen are are important also. And uh unfortunately, we're not going to be able to consider them until the next council meeting. But um I, again, I urge the public to pay attention to what is going on and 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 help us push back against the encroachment of 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 authority from Sacramento onto our um our city of our our city. So our city and other cities. So um this is a big, this is a big push that needs to be, this is a big push that needs to be um joined in by by the public. So thank you all.
All right. And uh thank you for your continued representation on the league uh committees for us. Thank you. Uh, so I will, interim city attorney, I mean interim city manager, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so one of the great things is that I would like to celebrate, I'm just gonna focus on one issue is uh, not even an issue, it's just the community's benefit and for the community's participation. Our uh interim city manager is Parks and Recreation Staff and city council members and community associations have many events throughout the year that uh they are organized, like I said, city and neighborhood association. Um, and we do have a running list of those events that are on a calendar. And uh definitely, I just wanna make sure that every single homeowners association is aware of these events and for every single neighborhood association to disseminate this information to their uh to their groups. So I would like to hear all the different groups out there that are having a picnic, of all the neighborhood associations that are having an event. And I would like to see the the city manager and his team to add that to the running list so that that could gets, you know, continuously sent out to the other groups. Um, because one of the things is is that Hawthorne is a city of a what, ninety thousand people, I think, was the last thing? Uh, we're diverse. We're extremely diverse. If you look at some of these other cities around us, we are very diverse compared to a lot of our neighboring cities and East Rota LA County. There is no question about that. I'll argue, you know, and I'm proud to say it. Um, but uh one of the things that I would like to see and to show that we're diverse is not just celebrating the diversity, but to have every single corner of our city participate in the events in the city. I actually talked to one of our groups, and I told them, hey, you know what? There's no east or west side of the freeway. There's no east or west side of Prairie Avenue. There's no east or west side of Crenshaw. You know how people try to say, you know, I want all these groups to to participate, okay? We do not have any, I do not wanna, I really do not wanna hear about elitist type of attitudes in our city, okay? And I think little by little, we're knocking away at that, okay? And then we don't wanna hear about groups on the other end of the spectrum that don't wanna participate uh in some of these other groups uh events. So I wanna make sure that we have everybody participating. Councilmember English knows what I'm talking about. She's smiling, and I know what she's, so. Uh, with with respects to that, I just wanna kind of go through a quick list, and that'll probably end my discussion. On some of the, some of the events that we have right now. Uh, you heard Councilmember Montero mention the World Festival that's on September, the uh September eighteenth. We also have, okay, let's, we have a community barbecue event on September second from five PM to eight PM. It's, in essence, it's mirroring the National Night Out event, but cuz that was such a a great success, we're having that again as a city. So it's important that uh interim city manager, you let all those groups know that we're having another event, so that they can come out and participate. So you you can do that, right? Just, yeah, the same groups, the same approach, everything. Uh, then we have the World Festival on September eighteenth. And then I'm coho- I'm hosting a, co-hosting a, or hosting a unity basketball tournament, which I have every year on October the sixteenth. Then we have the Halloween carnival, which is a big success. I remember my brother participated in that uh while back, like when he was about ten years old, and he won, I think, the con- he won the contest back then. I also have the unity volleyball tournament, which is on December eleventh. And uh we have the holiday, holiday home decorating contest on December fourteenth. December eighteenth, uh, we have the Winter Wonderland event that we, has been a great success. And one of our neighborhood associations, the North Hawthorne Community Association, uh wants us to announce their ice cream social is, which is taking place this Saturday, August twenty-eighth, from eleven to two PM at Eucalyptus Park. So definitely, uh, there's many events uh that are taking place, and I encourage everyone from all corners to participate. Uh, I'm, I haven't ended yet, but uh, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem, you guys both have your hands up. I don't know.
Yes, yeah, I have uh, I have, I wanna add on that list.
Yeah, that, oh, excellent, yeah. That's what we're talking about, right?
On um, on October twenty-first, right, uh, the Hawthorne President's Council, we're gonna have the uh community dinner, right, to benefit the Holiday Assistance Program. So on October twenty-first, from five to eight PM, at the Hawthorne Memorial Center, the sunroom, so we'll have the Hawthorne President's Council Community Dinner that is going to benefit the Holiday Assistance Program, okay? And then, of course, that in November, you know, be- uh before Thanksgiving, we will do, you know, food giveaway. And then, of course, in the Christmas time, around the uh the winter wonderland, we'll do also uh food and and toys giveaway. So let's keep that, those in mind.
Okay, uh, and interim city manager, can you add those to the list?
I'll tell you on all the dates, yeah.
Yeah, you know, I mean.
Thank you.
We're not, we're 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 a city of many events uh for the public. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, for for your really advanced planning, you can think about our business expo, the Hawthorne Business Expo, which will be on January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth of twenty-two. So uh, twenty twenty-two, January twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, two days, two days next year.
All right. And then Councilwoman Angie Ray's English does. Go ahead.
You see, Mayor, what you did?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so I have obviously the backpack giveaway I'm doing September fifth, doing a backpack giveaway. And then I als- I also do Operation Gobble every Thanksgiving, so Operation Gobble. And unfortunately, in previous past, I used to have Earth Day, and I have to do, I used to do the Service Provider Fair. So I hope to bring those back next year. But op- Operation Gobble and the Backpack Giveaway are the most uh pressing at this moment.
What time is the backpack giveaway?
Uh, backpack giveaway, I think it's at two. It's I, it's on social media. It's on social media. Uh, we'll put, we'll put more information, cuz it's more like a pop-up. So we'll put more information out.
And for the Councilwoman English, you know that we kept the Earth Day and the Providers Fair uh together, even when you were gone. But we we continue to do that, so.
No, thank you. You've been doing a great job.
So you can join us on the committee.
So thank you.
Councilwoman is here, so she'll take over now.
Uh, she's gonna be part of the committee.
No, well, well, you guys have done a great job.
She'll be part of the committee, no, I'll recruit her.
They all talked about it, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, um, interim city manager? So the way I see it is if you could assemble a email with those dates and the appropriate uh links to the flyers so that everybody could just see everything. Why, why am I asking this? Because I have people, there's nothing going on in Hawthorne, nothing going on in Hawth- complaining, complaining, complaining. All the time complaining. We tell them about the events that we have, and they don't go, but they say complain. So you know what? There's neighbors, they wanna stay at home. Well, right now, I'm I'm pretty sure.
Yeah. Do that, do that again. Is that how they do it? Do it again. Let me see.
You, you guys know whatever. But it's true, you guys see that.
We used to have a community calendar, so.
It's a community calendar, just put it on the calendar.
You used to have a community calendar that was uh uh every month was put out there, so we have to do that again.
What, yeah, I just maybe at this, at this moment in time, if you can assemble an email as well with all those links, that'd be good. Send it out to those uh neighborhood associations. There's a lot of things to do in Hawthorne. We have a great city. And uh we want everybody to participate. We have a close session item. Uh, is there any communications? Are there any communications for this, Mr. City?
No, we did not receive any communications. And just a, just a quick note, because I just realized that we are not meeting until September fourteenth, which is our next elec- the date of the election. So, yeah, please go vote, uh, go to LAVote.net, and then you can find the locations um where you can vote, either your uh voting center or Dropbox. That's it.
Wow, September fourteenth.
Thank you.
Yep, coming up.
Okay, so let's see. So there's no communications from the community or anybody? Okay, so we will now recess the city council uh meeting to conduct a close session on item thirty-five. They already addressed uh item thirty-three and thirty-four. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Is that, is that correct, Mr. City Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
So we will be addressing thirty-five in this close session.
Um, Mayor, um, may I have a two-minute break?
Of course.
Thank you.
We will now recess the city council meeting uh to conduct a close session in two minutes for a conference pursuant to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can I uh read the?
We are in recess. Or do you need to put, say, just a moment, uh, Mr. Eric Travis, have you, have you adjourned? I didn't hit the gavel.
You haven't hit the gavel, so we are still.
Yes, there we go.
Let me, let me, Mr. Mayor, let me just read the agenda item to the record. It's uh on agenda item, close session is number thirty-five, is conference with legal counsel on existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine subsection D subsection one. Name of the case is Palmer versus City of Hawthorne, case number twenty STCV four eight two two one.
Thank you for reading that into the record. Are there communications, anything before? We have a two-minute break?
No.
We are, so I am going to recess the city council meeting to conduct a close session for a conference pursuant to the agenda at eight twenty-eight. We're recess.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, what should I do if I think I might have.
The council, city council meeting is called back to order at eight forty-nine P M. The council, the city council meeting is called back to order at eight forty-nine P M. We have met in closed session for a conference pursuant to the agenda, listed as item thirty-five. And interim city attorney, Kim, will you provide a readout?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh the status was provided to council and city attorney has been instructed.
If there is nothing further from council members or staff, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty.